Okay, we're gonna call this workshop to order. It's a Saturday night workshop. And first up, we'd like to invite the state highway to come have a few seats up here. We've got three seats. We can throw a four seat for you. And, uh... Okay, like that. Are you exchange with them?
This meeting was with the state highway. It was prompted by Mr. Bridgeways' letter. It's about our pedestrian bridge.
I'm being, you know, calling off.
Pedestrian. The state highway is very intrigued.
We had, uh, I guess where we were a little bit confused with the project is it truly is a pedestrian safety issue. And we received the response from you and it said it would raise the elevation of the flood lane one-tenth of a, no, a hundredth of a foot.
I have a display here.
Eight of an inch.
Eight of an inch. And I guess what we're asking for is please help us, tell us what we can do to make this work if we can make it work.
That's what we're here to talk about.
Love it. That's what we need.
Well, one, I wanna say I appreciate that it started out by my letter. My letter was written, because I anticipated that when we said .01 feet. That, I think we wanted out here, can we say here?
Yeah, but there has been somewhere. Where is it?
Would be able to hear it.
Yeah, you can put it on the office.
I don't even know. So, and before I get to that though, so, you know, we wrote the letter in the sense of, my letter said, you know, we weren't happy to meet if you want to get through this, because I know it, I know it's not great when you hear, well, .01 can't do a project, right?
Yeah.
That's my letter, sorry. I knew I was saying that, but I knew it would be an obligation. So unfortunately, from a permitting aspect, right, it doesn't actually matter whether it's .01, .1, or 1.0, right? That's, so, an increase is an increase. In a floodway, so, we'll start with a little bit of historical background. Some of this you may know, and I apologize if you do know that. This map is showing the bridge. And it's actually showing, um...
Now, this area never floods, I wanna let you know.
No. So, what's mapped here is the floodplain. And then what's this is, is the floodway.
Floodway.
So, are you familiar with floodway?
Yes.
You probably are, because you have a...
I am, but I'm not sure for it.
You are, because...
Gene has pounded that in my ear so many times, the floodplain and the floodway.
So, the big significance in there is what you can, what you can, you know, impacting a floodway. And so, impacting floodplains versus floodways is different. So, you got the bridge here, and so you have this very wide experience. So, and so the hinging problem, so that just we're all on the same page, that the problem is this, is that we can't have any increase due to floodway elevation.
Okay.
And that is .01. But like I said, that doesn't matter if it was .1, 1.0, it's an increase. And our problem is, is your, your piece of facility that's within, if that was over here and out of it, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
That's a backwash tank, is what that is. When we backwash the filters, it discharges to there, settles out, and then the decant goes into a manhole here and pumps into our system. What that's for.
So, a floodway is generally where it's been mapped at there's a major flood. This is where trees and whatever's in its way would move down valley through that. Floodplain is just where water would be. This is actually where anything that water would parent out, trees and everything would fall down. So, that's sort of the historic, or FEMA has a whole definition of that. But, so, the point is, is if that was out of, we wouldn't have this discussion. But the point is, it's in, so, you know, let's focus on what it is.
Okay.
So, we have this increase. So, in Glenn's shop, there's a bridge hydraulics group. That group has conferred on several accounts for this project in talking closely with FEMA. They, his name's Andy Dusicki, and he's a very technically strong guy related to this, and, you know, they, they indicated to us they would remain firm on that.
Okay.
No increase, even if it's .01. And I started to get just generally how that feels, but that's kind of where we're at. So, what I'm here to talk about is kind of more pragmatic. We have a project for your pedestrian needs.
Okay.
And it's a 30% design. We took it to our PI stage, and we encountered this where we looked at several alternatives for the pedestrian bridge stabbing on, going down, going up. And so, where we came to what we thought is the best alternate is essentially building that pedestrian bridge in the shadow of the bridge. Unfortunately...
Downstream.
Unfortunately, there's an increase there. And so, I can't, I can't put that project out if I can't permit it. So, that's essentially where we're at, right?
We can't permit it.
Can't get a permit, so I can't do that. And that's not a state agency in our way. That is a federal agency. That's FEMA in our way. So, the solution to that is, right, we still really are committed to delivering that pedestrian project.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we stand.
Yep.
It's our opinion that if the town would submit a CLOMAR, that's a conditional letter of map revision, to FEMA, that they would see that much different than if we submitted that.
Okay.
Because you, in that particular instance, are not just the interested party in doing your project, you are actually the adjacent property. So, we would like to offer our support in helping the town do that.
Okay.
We could help review that. The cost will be some cost. We cannot incur that cost. I, I think FEMA would look at that, that they would think we're playing, we're being clever in that way, right? So, if the town must submit a CLOMAR, I think it needs to come from you all.
How?
Well, we can help review that.
How expensive is, is, is it?
I think the permit, to go through that review for FEMA is like $4,000 for the review. And then you would need to use your, I'm sure you have some sort of A and E mechanism, you have your consultant.
Okay. We have our engineer here.
I don't know what the engineer would...
ACIs are.
You know, and that, and you have Casey and Cogger. So, but, you know, so there's going to be a fee there. Now, I know, in talking to Ryan, Ryan's the project manager for the project. Talking to Ryan, I know there was originally, you know, good faith effort on your part to show that there was a commitment of some dollars towards the project. What I would say is, is that maybe those dollars could be used for this, if that's, if this is something that you're, we're on board with as far as trying to get to a solution.
We are committed.
And so, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, that would be used for that, and we would see that as contributing towards the project, right? And so, you know, we could still pay for the rest of engineering to go to final design and put it on the street. So, if we can submit that CLOMAR, the town would be willing to do that, we could help, we could review that package, make sure, you know, provide a technical guidance on what could be submitted. We get a favorable response from, from FEMA, we're back to business. We'll pull the project back up, and we'll proceed.
And then, once that's constructed, there has to be an analysis done for the letter of map revision for that.
Right.
So, that's a process to follow.
That's a process I would have to, I don't know what Glenn knows, and I'm not, Glenn's, Glenn's, Glenn's not the hydraulics guy, but he may know, but I think that, at that point, that's something that FEMA would be okay if we entered, if we did that. The conditional letter of map revision is a process by which you're getting sort of a heads up that if, so you're saying, if I build this, here's what it means. So, the impact to the firm or the FEMA map, right, this revision. And if they say, yeah, okay, if you build that, we're gonna be okay with, the revision would be resolved. So, what happens, then you would build that, and you would, you should be identifying that you did exactly what you were, and you should, you should have an approval. So, that's sort of a heads up. If you do this, then we would approve that. Now, what you have to do is make good that you built what you said you did on that conditional approval, right? But if those match up, you should get an approval. So, there would be a process for that. But at that point, I think it would be, FEMA's not gonna have a problem with that. I think one is just getting them on board with saying, here's a project, and it expresses the town's commitment or interest as the adjacent property to that. And so, that's kind of our thought process also on that, rather than us doing that.
Now, you mentioned about that tank that's right there. Is that, would that be an expensive thing to, to move out of the floodway? Because you're saying if that was...
See, there'd be more than, I don't know if it's a tank or the, there's bolts there too. These valve bolts, and everything in there too, they're in there. So, I don't know, cumulative effect of all those structures? Or just the prime, the backward tank?
We said no structures.
Huh?
Either no impact or no structures that are impacted.
I think you would wanna have all property structures and purchases out of it. So, I think it would include, I know I'm focusing on that, but it would focus all these other...
On the bolts.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
That would be a lot of piping and bowing and tanking and...
Gene, you had something you wanted?
I just had a quick question. With the CLOMAR, from what I understand, what you're gonna say is that you'll take responsibility, essentially, for the impacts of the increased eight of an inch, right? I, I think that's what the CLOMAR requires, is a sign off.
Gene is our town planner, and she'll be the one writing the revisions.
So, is the only property that would be impacted by the eighth of an inch all our property? That's the only thing?
Seems pretty low risk, right?
Yeah. Okay. So, only this property, it's not anyone else's property that we would have to take from.
Right. So, let's back up. Let's say, let's say that this wasn't in there. This is how it's supposed to work, right? Say this facility wasn't in, but it's like right on the edge. And say we were changing enough to actually make that line now touch that property. The change to that is, is that if that floods, it could damage that property. That's the change. And so, they, they don't want that. You have a facility already in there. So, if it floods, there's damage could potentially occur, right? If a tree is coming down through your river. That exists now, because it's already in there. So, our one-tenth of an inch, or...
One-tenth.
One-eighth of an inch, one-hundredth of an inch.
A hundredth of a foot is...
We're gonna get you. Just turn high with the Vegas.
Eight times twelve is ninety-six. That's close to a hundred, so...
So, one-eighth of an inch...
A hundredth of a foot is very close to an inch.
The point being is, you have a facility in here, our one-eighth of an inch, there's no mapable difference, right? Because you're only raising an inch, so you're not gonna, you will see no change in this line. But technically, there's an elevation that's modeled.
Technically...
So, it would technically increase the, the chance to incur damage to this. However, a point is, is that it's not any, it's not anything more than exists today. So...
We're willing to take the...
The outcome is risk. So, the town is just trying to get the permitting agency in line of what we're trying to do. And my suggestion is that the town takes that on, that will, I don't know the answer or outcome, so I don't, I wanna make sure I'm not conveying that.
Mm-hmm.
But based on our experience, I, I think it would be perceived very different than if the highway did that on behalf of the project.
Understand. Could, could it be as simple as the town requesting to the Army Corps this, but...
Say this up to FEMA.
To FEMA and state that we're already at risk, and we're willing to take that risk? I wonder if it could be that simple?
Is it an exclusionary type of thing of where they, because of federal dollars, if something happens, FEMA comes in, they're, they're giving money? Wonder if we have something where we assume the risk of, of that and take it off the table?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer for that one, do you?
I would have somebody from, your engineer...
I think FEMA can help you.
Contact FEMA and discuss it, whether it's a, my client, or the people I represent in town of Elkhorn, and we're interested in seeing this project move forward. We understand that there's an increase of a hundredth of a foot in floodway on this thing, and it's... So, the people, if FEMA understand a hundredth of a foot, the only reason I threw it in as an eighth of an inch is if I was talking to my mother and father, they have no idea what a hundredth of a foot is, but they got a real good idea what an eighth of an inch is.
Yes.
It's more than a sixteenth, it's less than three-sixteenths. It's so close to an eighth of an inch, you can't measure the distance. Difference, the bottom line is, I mean, we're not building a piano here. An, an eighth of an inch is like, who cares? Really? I mean, you know, who will ever be able to tell? The answer is no one.
And it's already in the floodway?
It's, and historically, it has flooded, so I agree with you.
But if they talk to FEMA and say, this is what we're interested in doing, we don't, the, the increase does not concern us, we're far more at risk without this pedestrian access out here.
Yes.
From, from a standpoint of what we're interested in than we are this filter seeing an insignificant amount of additional water as a result of what we're building.
So, so just knowing federal agencies, they, I, I think Glenn's advice is right. Like, you talk to your engineer, we could advise, we'd be willing to advise as well, that you have that conversation, and that could be belts and suspenders on top of it. The feds are gonna want you follow the process.
We're okay with that.
Because if it was this easy, that if I could've said, well, hey, the adjacent property owner signed off and said they're good with it, then we would've done that. But that's not the process.
Okay.
I think in doing that, it doesn't necessarily hurt, but they'll probably say, yeah, okay, we got, we got it, but can you do that CLOMAR?
I'm extremely clear with what you've said, and, and I really am. I, I think it's a, it wouldn't matter if it affected it, it didn't really matter the effect. It's, it comes down to getting them to...
It's either on or off.
Yes.
You know, they, they only know one answer. They don't know the second one.
And totter.
Black or white.
Are you good with that? Do you know where we're going here?
Yeah, I guess a couple of questions I have is, I don't know if you caught it when we, early on, they said that KCI actually did the H8 modeling for the project as, as part of a contract they have, building up the state.
Okay.
Would you allow us to utilize that if this is the modeling for management of the town? Or would we have to recreate that?
I see a couple nods, but they're, we don't know. We'll find out.
And then the second question is, the, our expert is the one that did the, the modeling for them. As long as that our expert is paid for by the town, do you have a problem with him also representing the town in the communications with FEMA?
State highway does not have a problem with that. Again, I, I think, I think the town needs to do this, and I think we need, I think we need to keep the mechanism separate.
I agree.
The risk is, is that they would think we're playing games. And so, we have to think about long-term, over lots of time, in lots of different places in the state. And, and we don't wanna hurt any credibility that FEMA would think we're just playing a game.
Yep. We'll make it very clean.
Sitting here trying to think of...
Go ahead.
Sitting here trying to think of a nice way of saying, over thirty years, we've been talking about the floodplain, the changes to elevation of the, the road. You know, when we had the change before, it was supposed to stop us from getting flooding, but we got flooding. That, that one-eighth of a foot coming from Delaware Avenue.
Yeah.
Now, what my concern is, we, we as a town, we don't have no control of that Delaware Avenue, because it's a state highway, you know, state road. But now, trying to get this bridge, and it seems like it's our property again to take care of what we need to do to get this, this safety situation straight. Now, out thirty-some years, the safety of this elevation, one-eighth of a foot, or whatever the guys told me...
One-hundredth of a foot.
Well, yeah, there we go. Whatever that is.
Actually, I like that the best.
I still say it really is no, really no, nothing to me, a separate number, because we need something definitely done for the benefit of the citizen. I know you guys are willing to do whatever, and everything's gotta go through the state and federal and all that stuff. But putting out all this money for changes to that road, it just seems like the town is just sitting with their hands tied, not doing anything for the citizen. And I, I get it every day. What are you guys gonna do something about it that's not our, our road? What are you guys gonna do now that's our road and our situation, because we have the property adjacent to what you need to make the change? All I know is, we've gotta come up with some kind of crazy old way to get a bridge put up there, because I go through there every day, two or three times in the morning, two or three times at night, and see the same problem, and it is frustrating.
I'm sure it is.
Change in the elevation to the road, are you talking about the work that was done about five years ago?
Yeah.
In twenty-five, ten, ten.
We had, we had a road, and the land the gate into it was pretty much the same elevation. Flood would come through and drop sediment, silt, all over the place. The state would come in and clear the sediment off the road, and after a while, you had some banks up here, and our road was down here. And so, now, when the floodwaters come through with silt and sediments and everything laid into it, it's gonna dump that sediment in the lowest spot, which was our road. So, our road was constantly filling up, and they were coming through with material and cleaning it up. The only reason they raised, raised the road was not to stop flooding, but was to allow that sediment, sediment to continue to flow across, so that it wouldn't all dump in the road. It would, when you got a low spot, all the sediment was dumping in. We couldn't stop the flooding. What we were trying to do was to prevent all the sediment from dumping in this spot, and so it would be evenly spread out. Now, over time, we realized that we continued to clear the road, and this sediment in the adjacent properties would continue to build up. X number of years from now, we expected we'd be back in the same spot again, with banks up here and the road down here, and they'd say, well, can we raise the road again? And, but it was not to stop, it was, the intent of that was not to stop flooding, it was to allow the sediment-laid water to continue to flow across and not dump its whole load on the road. It would make cleanup, we'd clean it up.
Nice way I'm asking.
It's all right.
Engineer, I've, there's never a chance to ask this question. What caused us not to look at raising and making it like a bridge coming from that elevation to avoid all that buildup and sediment underneath?
Yeah, the problem is, is we would have the bridge from here all the way over there.
Perfect.
Like a thousand big lungs. And again, that would be a short-term problem, because what would happen is that the sediment would build up onto that bridge and drop there, and pretty soon, there would be no way, no way for the water to flow through again, and now the bridge essentially becomes a dam. So, I guess the, the situation is, is that God created contours out here that said this area is low, and when waters come, it's gonna flood. And then, and then you say, well, what can we do to stop that? And we can try to do a lot of things, but it's basically the same situation they've got down in New Orleans. You're, you're in a low-lying area, floodwaters are kinda come, and they're gonna dump their sediments and all that other kinda stuff in this area, and there's really not a lot you can do about it.
Well, I think what we're here to discuss right now is this pedestrian wall.
Mine's, and it's a different issue.
And that is a different issue, because I constantly have to stop to let people go by, and we're going to have a fatal accident there if something is not done. The people have got to get across that bridge. They're using our park there. I don't know how many football teams are in there, soccer teams, people walking the tracks, but they have nowhere to walk over the bridge.
As someone who inspects that bridge or triages that bridge every year, I understand exactly what you're talking about. I don't move anywhere near as fast as I used to, and I spend an awful lot of time straddling the parapet, right, or the, the wall that keeps from driving off the edge of the bridge, riding it like a pony, so that I don't get hit while I'm out there. I understand exactly what you're talking about.
We agree with the need. We support the need.
Perfect.
And I have the project.
I have one question. How long of a process would it be till we hear back from FEMA? In your experience with them?
I don't know. We can get back to you on that.
For a while. Probably around this time of year. It's a lot worse than I would, but I would expect forty-five days if I'm working on it. I wouldn't say you're gonna hear in twenty-four hours. I don't think it's gonna be ninety days.
I would say thirty to sixty days.
Yeah, we're in the same...
I like ranges. I like averages.
No, and I understand what you're saying.
I like numbers that end in five and zero too, so...
So, your consultant can help you out with this in the sense, though, I, I think it's just important, I think it's important, just 'cause I'm a technical person, but the issue for, for FEMA is not the flooding issue related within these towns. That's related to the floodplain. This is a zone where if there was trees and debris and water move through, so that's their concern, not necessarily the increase of flooding associated with this, it's the increase to the risk of a floodway, things that would be moving during the flood. It's, it's a fundamental thing, but I think it's important, and your, your consultant understands it very well, so.
The sidewalk for the bridge, did you design it to be level with the bridge there? And so now you have water going underneath, which is increased, they have a backflow, so it increases on the other side.
We, we're, we're setting it up so that the low court of the pedestrian bridge is a little bit above the low court of the highway bridge, so that if there's a tree that flows under the highway bridge, it's not gonna take out the pedestrian bridge, which is why we kinda wanted it downstream as opposed to upstream. Now, somebody tells you, have to be upstream, you know, we'd have been there, we wouldn't have liked it. Our bridge, this bridge protects that bridge.
I think it's in a great location. The, that bridge though...
Which one? The existing or the proposed? The pedestrian bridge or the vehicle bridge?
Okay. See, in my mind, if it was actually gonna be a separate bridge...
It is.
Okay, still a separate bridge. So, you said, he was asking what he was...
Got you.
The pedestrian bridge. Okay. Can't you just take it up higher? Why can't you, why can't you just take it up another six inches, or whatever it may be?
The higher you go, the more ramps and stuff you're gonna have to break, build leading to it. I guess we're trying to minimize the impact of the bridge and the walkways or the trails, because it's gonna have to be something that's probably ADA compatible, get ramps and all that kinda stuff on and off it. So, the higher you go, the more those ramps head, head out, the more those ramps become a...
But it's going to lean up to it, I get it.
It is headed into flow going through this area, because again, all of this is in the area where it's an active flow area.
Take a look at that, though. Isn't that another option?
Yeah, FEMA says no.
Well, I don't know that, that's another option for us. I think this is one of these things, if you, I think no matter what you do, you're probably getting some kind of an increase. I don't, I don't know that we're gonna be able to mitigate it to zero.
I don't know the specifics, but I did have our consultant look at that, and then, you know, project officer look at that. I'd asked them, and they, they came back to me and said the impact was still present. Or, you know, exactly a little bit. But, and I don't know exactly, I guess why, off the top of my head, but it was looked at, and then the impact was still, still there.
The increase, of what increase though? Three inches, six inches?
Oh, I didn't get a number on it. All I knew is that they were...
Where is, where is...
Playing it around with it, wasn't able to make the, the increase go to zero, that this was the smallest increase they were able to come up with.
Very good. Do we have any other questions? I think we got our game plan down, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll submit a CLOMAR.
Okay.
And we can, we'll be with you, or Ryan, or Glenn, it doesn't matter, right? You just send an email to everybody.
Yeah, well, I think you can coordinate with Ryan. Ryan's the project manager.
Okay. Because we'll have our engineer, KCI, input with us and, you know, put that together.
And, and he can coordinate with, I'm sure, the hydraulics guy's up in Glenn's shop, be willing to take those packages, you know, just add extra advice, make sure that, you know...
Make sure there's something in there that doesn't look wrong. We don't wanna, we don't wanna have you guys submit a package that's inconsistent with information that we may have given.
And say, well, we've done it this way.
Look, you don't wanna submit your, I mean, look, you got an opportunity to get the professor to review your paper before you submit it to somebody else, and it's not gonna be cheating if we look at it, so. We'll look at it, and there's something in there, if we can mark up that makes it, obviously, it's sort of, we mark it up for an improvement, I mean, we'll...
Okay. Were you guys instrumental in a bridge that goes from Eider Park to Meadow Park?
No, it was a town project.
That was a town project, yeah.
There's a bridge.
Yeah, I did see that one, but I didn't know it.
And what?
There's a bridge here.
I didn't see that on the ADA. It's leading up to you.
There's a bridge, I think it's near Sanders and Bell Avenue, there's a bridge with town.
Is that a bridge that you guys like, the...
Just a separate.
No, I guess my question is, is there something about the aesthetics of that bridge that you're saying, "We would like this bridge to match that," or, "That bridge is ugly, and we don't want the new one to look anything like that."
Steel, red with the...
With wood deck. Couple of steel girders, pretty large.
I mean, that's easy, it's the other side where you have the escape mark and stuff like that, maybe you would have to come back further, it's just, it just doesn't make sense to me, and we all appreciate you guys coming out, it just doesn't make sense to me that there isn't a more simple fix to this potentially horrible problem, than just having something that, what if you take, instead of button up against that bridge, if you pour it all a foot from...
We looked at that.
It's just, we put a personal name, so.
I gotta tell you, the closer we are to the highway bridge, the more opportunity we have for the highway bridge to protect it.
Gotcha.
You know, something could bounce off, or something, if it's real close, you know, and I said, "Hey, if we keep it so that the low court of their, of the new bridge is the same as the low court of the old bridge, how are we getting any?" And they say, "Well, you know, there's some increased friction there." I said, "You gotta be kidding me." They said, "We're only dogging them an inch." I said, "Okay, I understand."
And that's why I was thinking, I thought the same thing. We went up about four foot, four five foot.
My problem is, I believe that if we went up higher, that the ramp coming down is gonna impact water, water used to flow there where you, now you've got some kind of a ramp, and that ramp is gonna act like a portion of a dam, and that's gonna back water up. So, that's even worse, so the deal is, we need to keep that so that the ramp and whatever is pretty much at the same height as the existing roadway. Very good, any other questions or comments? Thank you guys so much for coming in, thank you.
Well, you guys have a nice holiday.
Thank you, do you want, you can get copies of this, right?
Yeah.
Can we keep this, do you wanna keep this?
Yeah.
We don't like lugging.
Oh, 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 we just cooked everything off. Thank you guys so much, thank you for coming in. All right, next on the agenda, we've got the East Main Street sidewalk. G L A D. B I N D Victor, A U G H A. Deputy Director of the Office of Structures and Mounds. Can we ask you all to go out in the other room? Thank you.
This is how it is, man, on the other side.
Ben Smith.
Okay, where are we at? Tell us what we got.
Seventy thousand dollars is allocated for replacing the sidewalk, but since it's in the Historic District, the Historic Commission acted on the matter and wants to change what we anticipated doing.
When I came, there was a discussion about sidewalk grinding that was taking place in different areas of town, and a question during the Historic District Commission meeting was posed as to, well, shouldn't the Historic Board be consulted before any work is done in public right of way in Historic District? And I believe at that point, I brought it to a staff meeting, and was informed that I should maybe let them know if the work that was proposed for the East High Street area of town, and so I had Dan and Todd come in and talk to the board, the Historic District Commission, about it. And then, there was a letter drafted by Mark Largan, I think only one of the board members signed it, regarding concern about taking work away from the downtown Historic District area, which I think you all have a copy of the letter, so, it was, there was concern raised about...
Do you believe that the Historic Committee has guidance over our sidewalks?
Well, it is working in Historic District, but I'd probably refer to our attorney on that.
Yes, there you go.
Sidewalks are safe.
I think what they have suggested, you know, they don't have an opportunity to lose their thoughts about anything that goes on in Historic District, not that they have some veto authority, they don't have any budget, you know, so it would be from the perspective of town attorney, obviously something needs to be done there relatively soon, I lost all that again today, it's right across the street from my office, and it's, you know...
Yeah, for an ADA intent, when it's, there are sections that are clearly not compliant, so it's something that needs to be addressed, whether to be addressed with, this is what we presented, which basically mimics what is on the other side of roadway, which is to replace the curb with a nice, new curb, it's consistent height, a brick band for an accent, and then concrete. Whether they address it with something like this, or with something that's closer to what the Historic Commission wants, they're looking for all-grant curb, you either replace and reset, you know, what's there, or putting a new, or it doesn't exist, and all-brick for the roadway.
Actually, what they're looking for is reuse of the existing brick.
Correct.
To the extent that can be reused.
Right, and just to kind of go back to where we came today, this is, again, the project, which is at the Hope and Presbyterian Church, their driveway, even right now, is currently concrete, but in part of the church, it's all brick, it's been redone in the past few years. There's a section from there to the Methodist Church, that is bricked. These two driveways here are the areas where it's really kind of weighty, where the driveway requires, right across it, required the brick. There's also a section here where something happened, and next to this gravel, or something has been basically kind of filling a hole.
Because when you move the border connection...
That was the fire service was...
Inside the sidewalk, because there's two places like that, it has asphalt, and both of those, you have a water connection inside of the sidewalk.
It's definitely agility-related, correct?
And then in front of the United Church is all concrete today, and then picks up with brick again, so you get to one of the driveways, which is then concrete, and then you have another section of brick, and then when you get to the intersection, it's only it's concrete. So, yes, the areas that are existing brick, they want us to be able to redo those and reset them to be a smooth surface where they gave compliance.
We're gonna say reset, we're not trying to get them to go right back where they were.
Basically, what you do is you remove the brick and stack it to the side, repair the bed for the sidewalk, and then you reset it with a flush, smooth surface that meets the current ground, so it wouldn't be exactly the same location, I mean, if you would try to keep brick from this area of the town back in that same location, it's making it sore.
Well, my question is, how come, because of the bricks, we can't go out and find the same bricks that they're looking for, right? They're way, way...
We can't find them exactly, these bricks obviously are old, outdated.
So, my question is, why can't we come up with some kind of design that will satisfy them with the use of the bricks by making the sidewalk ADA compatible, whatever it is, and then just make some kind of design, and they're using the bricks that will, say we reuse them, but we're also making the sidewalk safe, but that's, because right now, we're going a little bit further than what we really need to be, we're replacing a sidewalk. In the historical area, I know keeping a building, a structure, and all that stuff same, but you're dealing with sidewalks, we're talking about safety here for just people in general who walk in the streets.
I mean, what we offered will be presented as a landmark, but that for the brick accent, we would utilize the existing brick for the accent, so we're making the existing brick for the roadway. That was not something that satisfied them, and where I was trying to get them to go was to give us a kind of a, you know, somewhere in between, could we reset brick, you know, in certain areas, and then do concrete where it's concrete today, whatever, in response we got from that, the need was, no, we want all ready and all ready.
I have a question, who are gonna answer it. How many board members were at that board meeting?
Thirty-four.
So, why did only two sign the letter?
The other two decided, determined they didn't want to sign the letter.
Okay, so, I respect the thoughts and decisions of the Historic Commissioner, but I have those same bricks in the front of the visitor's center. We have reset them, I don't know how many times, Dan, and what happens with those bricks, the way they're set, they dip, and right now, we have a very large dip, we could get an hour of rain, and you'll have a puddle this big, and there have been people who tripped and fell there. I think they should be reused, the bricks that are there, in some other function, perhaps making a welcome to Elton sign somewhere, or something, but for the safety of the people that walk there, and the members of the church who have been requesting this for many, many years, I really think they need to be replaced. That's just my thoughts.
Reflexive about a concrete surface?
With the same thing that's in the rest of the town.
Yeah, the other idea was that by the accent, we're gonna do that, the concrete for the actual wall.
Yeah.
Mr. Lemon, you had a question or a comment?
Could you put a steel plate under those bricks? I hear what you're saying, but if you reinforce, put a steel plate with some reinforcement underneath it, it'll probably hold those bricks up.
Yeah, actually, another way to do it, and I'm not sure how the ones in front of your, where you were talking about, replace, but in many cases, you actually replace a concrete base, and then, then do like a sand layer, and then set the bricks on top of that. That helps to a certain extent, but if you do get some water, get down below, even the sand can wash out and create some unevenness, and it does become a maintenance issue or not.
And I may be wrong, but when you received the grant from the visitor's center to repla, to fix the floor, the heat and air was under there, when that person came in to do that, to keep it historically correct, they had to move a brick aside, fix it, put that same brick back in the same location, and I remember him telling me that, and that's why it was, and I could, I know exactly where it's been taken up, because I was working there then, but they had to use that same brick in the same spot to keep it historically correct.
For the building, yeah.
For the building.
Lou, you had some price estimates?
I think, you have those?
Yeah, we put some estimates together, and at this point, I think we're looking at probably one and a half times the minimum for a difference between a concrete option and a brick option. The difficulty's there, give the...
Creative.
The brick pricing sometimes is difficult to estimate, just because, especially, option two, option one, was at one point we tested, we'd come up with a price that we did know an accident, just to see what the cost rate, but that's not...
That's another option.
So, that's what we have right here, I think they're conservative numbers, we try to be conservative, so we don't end up commensurating price, but it looks like we're about one and a half times the cost if we were to do a brick option versus a concrete option. And again, like I was saying, that's the main for bricks and grants that work, it's difficult, just because there are limited contractors who do that at work, and so that price can change significantly, you know, from project to project, so, but as we have right here, I think we're, I think it's at a one and a half times cost to do the all-brick and granite option versus the accent option that we have here, that we have to mimic the other side of the road line.
So, the one thirty-three is kinda how we've got it, that's kind of on the left side, to be consistent, and the two hundred thousand dollar number would be to use that granite and reset the bricks.
To reset the bricks that are there, and to bring in new bricks that don't have brick today, and to replace ones that can't be reused, because some of the bricks that are there probably aren't available to reuse, and also remove and reset the existing grants that's there, and then, where we don't have grant today, to bring in new granite to replace that. The other thing to keep in mind is, these are based on bringing in a contractor to do both projects. Dan believes that if we were to follow this option, there's at least portions of it, not all of it, that his group would do, and that would be added, also, to attempt this, you know, they feel good, and she would want to then bring in a contractor to do the work.
Dan was gonna have a contractor build a curb line.
Exactly. See, my intention was to have a contractor build a curb line, and then from there, we get our base curb, same height, and then what we do, is that we do a piece of metal on appropriated town pizzles, and just piece of metal, we go along, so, you're not turning out the whole sidewalk, you're still a piece of the town, so.
If we do the brick option, though, I don't believe that you guys have the crews that can actually handle the granite and the brick.
Yeah, the concrete, yes. The concrete brick, the asset, yes, the concrete, yes.
This option, but if we were to go with the all-brick, all-grant option, I don't think that the option of bringing in the permanent town for you to work is an option, I think we're having to, we're definitely at that point.
I don't know if it's considered with the granite curb, would that have to be approved by the state highway?
Cause that's a state highway, her basic, her base is there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a...
I don't know that it would be an issue, as long as we have the right height and size, because it's already printed under today.
Quite announced.
I believe we have to get it real quick. And you may not know the answer, Mr. Don, normally last weekend, my son's getting ready to do the Eagle Scout project, and what it's gonna be, the bottom's a hardscape, and so there's a rural scout equivalent to the Eagle Scout project that we've been working on, because that includes some hardscape, and he's trying not to have to do the hardscape. The long story short, we've been working on it this past weekend, and I find that the common technique is, once you get your hardscape and your bricks down, they come with a vibro-tender thing, and with vibration, can't haul it down to settle it into the underlying base. Is this old brick, I mean, hypothetically, they would decide that's renewed, that's where, is that brick gonna hold up to that stuff?
That's one of the risks that you have, is that it does have issues, and if that happens, they have to approve it and adjust it. When they do the vibr, they also pour down sand, enact forces way down in joints, and when you vibrate it locks it in, so that's what we're talking about there.
You guys need more information to make a decision next week?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna make a decision.
We have a budget for this, we wouldn't have two hundred grand. We don't even have a hundred and thirty, we don't even have seven grand for the project.
At like four.
I can tell you, my personal opinion, my support's gonna be in doing the brick inlay, the existing brick that we've ingrained it, that we can salvage, I would love to use that for, you know, I'll just give you an example, I know the Historical Society is looking for a sidewalk to go from along the side of the building to the rear of the property. To me, that would be, you couldn't ask for a better sidewalk if they took, and they got their volunteers to put, use the old brick to build your sidewalk. It's just a walking path, and they might be able to create something, so, that's where my support's gonna go, I don't know how the rest of the group feels, but I can't see spending seventy thousand dollars more, and I know that you're, I think you guys will be able to do it well under a hundred thousand dollars.
Actually, no, guys, I look forward to it all, but I don't challenge.
So, under a hundred thousand, so could you do that project for seventy, what we already did?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's just material, it's not labor, labor's already included by the way. Oh, yeah.
What are those guys, what else are these guys supposed to be working on? Is that what I'm saying?
My concrete crew, then once, you know, the bulk of it down there, all they do is shoot around concrete, do concrete delivery. Then from there, I can augment it.
I see, I understand, I understand. Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
I think...
We had...
Good job, it's also a word, so.
That was all that we had on the budgeting items, but there was two things that kinda came that we advertised on, but there's two things I wanted to bring to the board. One, I want John to review, I had Lou today do a resolution, R one two thousand sixteen. This morning, we had met with, we had some questions on why some of our, how do I wanna put it, our criminal, possible criminal issues don't get put through the judicial system.
Building-related.
Building-related issues.
Businessier offenses.
What do you mean, building-related, like stealing?
No, 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 no.
Maintenance of property, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a maintenance of property, the current penalty is up to six months, but anything ninety, over ninety days, a defendant can plead a jury trial, so we're gonna go for ninety days or less, that would maintain it in district court, consequently, you would have the issue with referral to the circuit court, which the state's attorney apparently doesn't like.
An example that Chip used this morning was a, there was a code enforcement issue on a rental property. He sends a letter to the landlord, the, he also sends a letter to the tenant, and they don't comply, so we send a second letter. So now, we wanna serve them a summons to, because they're not abiding by some of our rules and regulations. Several years ago, the, we're not sure if it was the state's attorney's office or the commissioners at the, I guess there's a commissioner at the courthouse.
Yeah, they do that mission.
That, said that they did not wanna issue a summons for a, someone's gutter. We're not gonna issue a summons to someone to repair their gutters. So, we kinda believe that it's because it made it to the circuit court and didn't stay in the district court, and it comes down to this penalty. So, our penalties for years have been, you could serve six months in jail if you found guilty, so what's the person gonna do? They're gonna say, "I want a jury trial," so you do a jury trial for a gutter, and the state's attorney's office is looking at this, "Are you guys crazy? We're not gonna prosecute someone that could get a, for a gutter, up to ninety days, or up to six months." So if we drop that to under ninety days and under... So if we drop that to under ninety days and under, then, uh, it has to be taken care of in the district court and it won't go over to the circuit court.
They can't do a jury trial.
They can't do a jury trial on it. So our issues with gutters and things like that.
Get the job either fixed or at least it might be on it instead of just letting it just land, linger there.
Does, does that make sense for them?
Procedurally, that's exactly how, how it works. I don't know.
Of course, they got appeal, but.
Yeah, taking appeal and that, and you don't know what kind of penalties the judge is likely to impose, what that judge is going to view this as a crime or, uh, you know, so, but there, I, procedurally, that's right. If you have something in the penalty, it is the potential penalty, not what actually gets imposed. So if somebody's, I don't care what it is, in the criminal statute, traffic statute, if it has a potential penalty of more than ninety days, they have the absolute right to man a jury trial, walk in the district court, day of the hearing, say, ah, you know, jury trial, okay, fine, give you a court paper, and that's across the street. And the state attorney finds that that's in their liability to, uh, do a jury trial with this stuff. You know, we got murderers and whatever, can't be able to.
The, uh, I would say ninety-five percent of the folks that are building inspectors offices, I'm guessing here with this ninety-five percent, that we send a letter to, they perform and, and they say, okay, I'll get my gutters fixed or I'll, I'll get that car tagged. But the five percent that don't buy the letter, the other five percent in years' history, once they got that summons, they took care of them. See, we can't even get to get them served now. It's just like kind of falling on deaf ears. I don't want to say deaf ears, but it's.
It's pretty close.
Yeah.
It's been a struggle.
There are other instances though where you can pursue sue, avenues as well.
Yes.
That doesn't require the state attorney's office to prosecute.
These are criminal offenses though, misdemeanors, so that's the difference. There are a number of, there are infractions which are civil.
So a gutter is a misdemeanor?
No, it's not a matter of gutter. You don't, you're not sending somebody to deal with a gutter. You're sending somebody for, for, uh, opposing the, the government from telling them to fix the property. They don't get in there for one better. It could be any number of things. You've got to be out of property falling apart. They cite all the regulations, then they just ignore the town. And then we send a second letter and they ignore the town. Well, the third thing to get is, it should be a criminal summons for a lot, for these violations. Then they have a right to go to the district court and have a right, they actually end up in a district court setting. Well, if the penalty is less than ninety days, the trial will remain in the district court. There's no right of jury on that. So we're trying to actually get people to do it, not to put them in jail or find them. They actually fix a property up, you don't have any of this, but you'll have a, a certain number of people who just completely ignore the town altogether, won't do anything.
Yeah, John, look at, tell Wade, just get some action done on, uh, issue, a problem instead of saying, oh, I get this every week, I'm not aware of this, oh, good, don't take me to court. That's basically what they say. And then finally we send a letter out again, our code enforcers getting frustrated because nothing's being done, and finally we get some court to respond. If that, if we really haven't.
Doesn't get to.
Oh, it doesn't get to court, that's what it is.
I feel like government, creating into a town, dying, or something, so.
You have to hammer.
Code enforcement.
And I get it, I just, uh, predominantly, my opinion, but the, uh, is there, have we thought through the unintended ramifications of, damn, I didn't think about that, of shorting this thing up? Has anybody ran any type of scenarios that way to make sure that?
Oh, he's never been a person since in my short career with the town of Elton who's been put in prison for a building violation, have the six months on the books. I don't think anybody would ever go to prison for three months, actually. I'd be surprised they'd go to prison at all, but the penalty's still there. Usually it's a fine, but, you know, I don't think.
Twenty years I've been in those courts, I haven't seen one.
Has anybody, any elected official or any, anybody way of one misuse, changing this ordinance?
Well, this reduces the penalty actually, not, it doesn't increase it. State law prohibits anything over six months.
They're dropping it from six months down to ninety-eight.
It reduces it.
Instead of you having your opportunity of.
A jury trial.
Jury, you have to put your. Now we're, we're taking that away from.
Well, everybody, in any penalty under, under law that has a maximum penalty of under ninety, ninety days or less.
Now, does that mean you're going to, what's going to happen now, we're taking away their, their right to actually have.
If we do this, drop it from six months to ninety days, everything will be resolved in the district court and not being a chance to go into the circuit court.
Except by appeal. See, you never deprive a citizen of its right to a jury trial in the sense that if it stays in the district court or found guilty, they can appeal it to the circuit court. If they found guilty in the circuit court, they can appeal to the court of special appeals, it can go all the way. Of course, I don't think those grants are charging for, in a federal, says, for a gutter, but it can go to the court of appeals, or court of special appeals, who knows?
They don't, they only have one appeal as a matter of fact.
Okay, that's a circuit court?
And that, that would be to the circuit court. Any appeal from that point on will only be if the court of special appeals would.
Accept.
Accept.
Just like the United.
Still have the opportunity to.
Well, it's, they have a right to have a trial in the circuit court. No, you know, these minor infractions, people, let me phrase it, people that are penal, are charged with these minor infractions, don't have a right to a jury trial. And that's kind of the full process of the state now. It's the, in essence, the Maryland constitution that says that if you're charged with any, any offense that comes with a penalty greater than ninety days, that's where you get a right to a jury trial. It stays in district court, district court doesn't have the jurisdiction, doesn't have the authority to have a jury trial, because they don't have a jury box. There is no jury trial in the district court. And it's only where the, there's overlap in jurisdiction where the charges, what, lucky to be a, that is charged in the district court, but it has greater penalties. And so they can elect, have it heard in the circuit court and have a jury trial if they choose. Here, they just don't have the tools. Exactly. We mentioned that from the series to the less serious, that's, that's what we've got collectively.
That's what it's doing.
And, yeah, and it makes, it speeds up the process and keeps it in district court. And we probably have terms there to prosecute this.
Any other questions?
Chip, I'd like to mention that Chip said, or Chip is aware of it, probably happened to threaten our all there, when actually a criminal, criminal summons was served, I think the great majority of those actually defendants in those cases complied prior to trial, was not crossed. Very rarely did they actually go to trial or say they didn't do something that carefully and meticulously documented about what they did. So it's just like, you put that, push them into a corner and then they, they agree to fix the problem. I don't, that's what I'm saying, very rarely did they ever actually get into the district court setting.
This kind of, you know, what field, what, would something happen that prompted this?
It might have been going on for a long time.
Been happening for this.
Yeah. What's been going on for a long time is that there are a number of people who simply ignore the town. And when the effort has been elevated to the point of actually getting criminal summonses and the summons is actually being refused by the court, town is going to be worse at all. So when you ride down the road, it's, I wonder why we can't get the town to fix that. Reason is because we have no records under law. At this point in time, the state's attorney will cooperate. Yeah. So that's, that's where it boils down to.
Very good. Well, hopefully we'll get to introduce that next week. Uh, the last week I was going to do it.
You want it next week?
We have to open it, gentlemen, for resolution.
No, no, you have to vote on it, but I didn't know if your vote wanted next week.
Oh, whenever, yeah, I'd say like.
If we're going to do it next week, then I'll change resolution on it because this was for 2016.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
It's a matter of change in the number first.
No, no, sixteen's good.
Okay, what is the first meeting in, in January?
That's good. Okay, Lou, you got the lease agreement with the Board of Education?
And I, yeah, I copied those to everybody. I, I've started making some changes, but I have the staff, I submitted it to staff and, of course, we were, I'm sorry, we would discuss it, staff meeting tomorrow.
All right, very good.
But would you get a heads up on what, what's here? I guess, well, I know, Charlie, Scott wrote it, so, you know, kind of unique little style there, but, you know.
Very good. I guess we'll all take a look at it. You guys will discuss it and you'll give us a recommendation.
Right. We're going to make up, I mean, what, how that was originally put together ironically was for a building that day, well, it's not. They've given us the land, we have to build the building, so a lot of the language relates to, if we rented a building from them, we would take care of the building, but that's why a lot of it's to be changed. It's just a shortcut on a thing.
Where, what do you want comments back?
I'm sorry?
What do you want comments?
Uh, wait, the staff, I have a staff meeting tomorrow, but with the staff meeting, if they have additional comments, I'll make them and I'll, I'll ship them to you. Uh, we can get the final.
Will you send that over? I have my comments back.
I'm sorry?
I said, when we shoot that, can you put in there in the text, what did you want to see my comments?
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. And I copied Jill's, too.
Very good. Anyone have any other things for Mr. Lemon?
I don't like to hold up the meeting, anyway. Uh, I asked about infrastructure last time I was here and I want to get a clarification. Didn't you have a, a group of people come in and talk about the town infrastructure and why these needs, workshops?
We have, Severn Trent gave us a four or five year plan out last year on.
That's his recommendation for the.
Recommendations for, for the plants, but there's, there hasn't been any specific plan for replacing water sewer lines in any area of the town that I'm aware of, any type of infrastructure, has it?
I thought that was a serious issue here in town. I, I don't know anything about it. I thought it was a serious issue, is that I talked to Dan about it, he said he would look at it for his budget, but it seems, and a few of us should probably run that by him to talk to him about it, but it seems to me, uh, the fact that he looked at starting now going forward, is that some kind of a plan?
I think it will some other products out, coming out of the town, or municipal.
And maybe I'm asleep and I thought I heard somebody at the meeting say I really could.
I'll bring it up with Dan.
I had brought it up a couple different times. I think the last time I brought it up is when the, oh, actually, that's when the, um, the, we did a water study, the, the two gentlemen that were sitting here that day. And I asked about, uh, yeah, how much had we spent before? We, we only spent, I think it was half a no, you guys had a budget and we only spent seven thousand, so we pulled that forward. So that was the last time that, that it was talked about, that they were supposed to put some of that into their, their, uh, their study.
What ever happened to that?
What? Well, the water meter guys. Yeah, it should be kind of, I think.
No, he's talking about the, the.
Red study, the red, the red study.
That should have already been.
That's red study.
They don't, they're, they're not, you know, they're just people, they're rate setting and they, and that's, they have their reserve and everything and that.
And, and I know that's.
One of the last things that I was.
There's a rate study.
Right, it's a rate study, that keeps a reserve in there for replacement.
And, and I know that Severn Trent's been working with us pretty closely with the water loss, right? And, uh, I spoke to Charles Fiera, uh, after the last meeting and he said there, there's a few other meters that they want us to take a look at, but.
Also, too, when I, I met with Severn Trent, West Tech, they're rep for the, uh, filters, that's the treatment plant. So we're going, if they're going to get a proposal to us for changing the media, under drains, tube settlers and things of that nature, we've got a price on that capital, we can place them both, those, those filters. And then we're meeting with the water supply people, then they need about our new content that may require a number of relatively serious treatments and modifications. I'll be second week in January. So the water study, what do we stand on the water study?
Oh, I'm sure the manpower gets back with them. Uh, we were fixed all the meters, but you mean the water rate study?
The water rate study.
Uh, we had some questions with them regarding what they said, what you brought up earlier that we had only spent a small amount of what we had budget for, you know, capital improvements. Um, and we just kind of, my, my bank's not, come back to them. We did ask a few questions. We, they, um, that they changed, the, the person that was actually doing the study left and they have a new person here, so we had some questions for a new person that, you know, they're just, uh, we need to get some information back to them. We didn't initially agree with that low number that you just mentioned a couple minutes ago.
Okay, and then, uh, is there, can we get a timeframe on, from them, okay, what's going to be done? We'll be able to have it to you by the middle of January, the middle of February?
Uh, that would be very difficult right now, quite frankly. Who's that staffing?
Yeah, we're kind of short right now. We're a schedule.
All right. Well, send them a letter, send them the letter, see. Or I can, or send an email would be good, just send a quick email.
Okay, I can, I faced with.
Very good.
And then, you know, the town, where the state.
I want a lower water and sewer rate, so.
I'm ready.
I don't mean to extend the meeting, I, I do need to.
Yes.
In the, in one of your workshops, you discussed water source, shore, and non-profits. That's something I'm very interested in. Is that a bad issue or is that something that you're looking at?
Well, as of right now, we haven't moved any further with it. The last, I think, a meeting ago, we received, I think, was it you who requested or Charlie? Uh, I requested what, uh, what you, who was not being built and I think it was a total of.
Commissioner Gibbs had that request and I, I responded to the board and updating the, the ones that we knew that were not.
There's, there's a handful that are not being.
About twenty or so.
No, I don't have it.
That were not being built for water and sewer, the nonprofits. But as far as, uh, uh, creating a, a special rate for nonprofits and we found out there was how many, over a hundred and something nonprofits in the town, I don't think it would work to be able to work a special rate for the nonprofits.
Well, that is your idea.
It was.
I thought it was a good idea. Of course, where I'm coming from, I would just fill them like the power company and, uh, that's another source of revenue for the town because they are using facilities in the town. And I know Earl and maybe some others didn't read about perch. I'm bringing it up again because it's something I'm interested in.
Very good.
I know, like, we also talked about, if you were to move that traction, you would probably want to know if I lose it, own their property versus those nonprofits that were running, you know, but we could just do a couple different tractions together.
Very good. Didn't the county or the state do a, a, a change where you're from? For our area, things start, start changing.
We'll get that in the middle, third week if that's the word.
Third week. I told them to come through your neighborhood and really jack it on.
Right away, I know, right.
Very good. Well, listen, this meeting's adjourned.